To order the Douglas Zoning Board of Appeals meeting on Wednesday, December 1st, 2021 at 7:12 PM. We're going to skip over the first agenda item and we're going to move to the several months of minutes that need to be approved.
Which minutes?
I will actually want to do January this.
Yeah, January 6th. Not the, we're going to take the condensed version.
Yeah, correct.
Versus the long version.
Yes.
Thank you, Matt, for your efforts in tidying up January 6th meeting minutes for us.
You're very welcome. I think I was getting some buttons together. And we're going to go back over the motion and thanks for your help to make sure we got the recordation correct.
So I had read them all prior to the meeting. I don't know if you had.
John, did you have a chance to look at that? The new revised January 6th? That was the.
Yes, I did just briefly, yeah.
Yep.
And there was a lot of changes that we had before, but I guess I did.
Yep. So if everybody's read them, I'd make a motion to accept the January 6th, 2021 meeting minutes.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, seconded by.
John Bumbara.
John Bumbara, to accept the minutes of January 6th, 2021 as written. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You want a roll call vote for that?
Yeah, we should do that. Aye, Dan Heaney.
Go ahead, John.
John Bumbara.
Mike Fitzpatrick, aye.
Okay, so minutes are approved.
Did you, only because I don't remember, did you do the attendance?
I didn't yet, no.
Okay.
No.
You're going to wait and see.
That's right.
Okay.
That's what I would do, yep. Okay. The next.
Can we put a blanket on, say, the meeting minutes for November 3rd, October 6th, September 1st, and August 4th? I went through them today.
We have.
Yeah?
We have April, May.
I missed some time.
I mean, sorry, April, June, and July. And I had a couple revisions on.
That's why I stopped the other one, so under the motion that we accept the November 3rd meeting minutes, October 6th meeting minutes, and September 1st, and August 4th.
Let's see.
For the record, Mr. Chairman, it appears that our fourth member is trying to unmute.
Okay.
Yes.
It just doesn't have audio or video right now.
Yep. Sean, if you can hear us, you're muted.
I didn't mean to be muted, I apologize.
Thank you, Sean, for.
This is last move of gas. Sorry about that.
Nice suspenders.
I've been saying I repeatedly, pretending to.
All right.
Okay, so you want to jump, can we jump off the many minutes?
Yep, we can.
Momentarily, so we can get to the applicant?
Yep. All right.
Fine with that, John?
Do you have a motion on the floor?
Yep. Well, we approved the minutes of January, and that's where we stopped, so. Okay, so we're going to get back to our agenda. The first agenda item is a public hearing for David Brown, case number 2021-17, 32 Car- College Cottage Colony, I'm sorry. The date of the application was November 9th. It was posted in the Town Hall, the public hearing, and it was advertised in a Telegram and Gazette, and it read as, reads as follows. The Town of Douglas Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing beginning at 7:15 on Wednesday, December 1st, 2021, in the Douglas Municipal Center, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass., to hear the following application. David Brown is requesting a variance pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 10, and the Douglas zoning bylaws, Section 3.4.4, to renovate a kitchen family room in an RA zone district. The required road frontage is 200 feet, and 100 feet is provided. The minimum lot area required is 90,000 square feet, and 85,000 feet is provided. Front yard setback required is 50 feet, and 47'7" is provided, but.
Forty-five.
Forty-five'7" is provided, sorry.
That's all right.
And the property is located at 32 Cottage Colony, MAP 159, parcel 46. A copy of this application may be viewed in the Community Development Department during regular business hours. Any person wishing or interested in being heard on a proposed application should appear at the time and place designated. The, this meeting will, is attended by Mr. Fitzpatrick and myself in person, as well as Mr. Bumbara and Mr. Holland via Zoom. And Mr. Forget has an excused absence, and we do have our correspondents from the Planning Board, which said that they are in favor of granting the variance. So, and all certified mailings to the abutters has been completed and received back from the, from the abutters, so we're good with that, and the public hearing is now open. Would you like to join us at the table, Mr. Brown?
Thank you.
So we have your application in hand. If you could give us a rundown on what you're looking to do.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, before we start, just from a procedural thing, the way it's advertised, being 45'7" inches is provided for their front yard setback, that's actually their rear yard setback?
Correct.
Is that an issue?
I think we could address it in the decision.
Okay, okay.
That, that the plan is correct.
Yes.
But the advertisement was not correct, and we could.
Okay.
Handle that through the decision. So the floor is yours, sir.
It's a house we purchased last June, which, from what I gather, was sometime around 1940, they started building it, and they put additions on it, put a basement in it at some point. The two additions they did, they put shed roofs on, and because of the grade of the property.
Oh, if you can just, she can't hear you, if you can pull them, there you go. Thank you.
And because of the grade of the property, I'm not sure entirely why, but they framed the floor of the additions with like two-by-four floor joists. I hit my head on the roof in multiple places, because that's how low the ceilings are in places. And each section of the house, you've got steps, lots of steps, and one of my goals is going into the house, you have to step down a step, walk eight feet, step up a step, step down another step, turn, go up another step, go in, go down another step. There's steps everywhere. So I, my wife's had knee operation recently, and I'm trying to get rid of some of the steps. So when you see the word decking out front of the house. It's actually this cement someone did, which I have the photographs on my phone I could show you. It's someone, I think, dabbled in cement work, so I've got a lot of steps with unusual risers and heights on them, and I hope just to drop some decking in, composite decking, kind of level things off without even disturbing the cement, just ground top of it. And some of the steps that are crooked, that go down on the side of the house, same deal, just put a normal rise run with a handrail, something to get. So the cement, there's no raised decking on the side of the house, it's really just covering the cement and putting in something that's somewhat, I guess you'd say it would meet code terms of rise and run and handrail, and something decent. The actual footprint of the house doesn't change. There's two, there's what was a sunroom, I'm assuming at some point, that they finished. And you go down, I'm going back in. You walk in the house, and in the corner, there's a spiral set of stairs, which were really cool when I was a kid.
Not so much now.
No, they're not. So, so the spiral stairs are coming out, and we want to put in a normal set of stairs to go down the stairs. Meeting, nothing special, meeting code fully in terms of, no, engineers doing that normally. When you, so now you get in the house. If you walked in the house, you turned to the left, and you walked forward, you would have to duck so you don't hit your head, and step down, and now you're in another section of the house that I hope to raise that, that section is framed with two-by-fours. The main house is framed with two-by-sixes. The engineer wants to rip out the center beam, put in, double up, I believe, the two-by-sixes, keep that as a normal height, rip off that two-by-four floor framing, carry it as a normal height. And it's got a shed roof on it, which leaks. And there's then an opening down low, and you can pass things down, and if you walk around down the spiral stairs, and you can then go up some more steps, you can actually get into the next section of the house, which also, when you walk forward, I hit my head and the roof leaks. So what we want to do is take these two sections and just bring them up to the normal level. The house has a gable roof on one end, we just wish to raise that up about, I think it's about 18 inches, to get headroom, and then just carry that forward. And then, on the end of the house that faces the water, put a deck about six feet out with some columns coming down, and a set of stairs going down, so you'd actually have a second method of egress out of the house. It's covered in the plan before and after, I've got some photographs, I've got some other sketches, which were discussed today from the engineers doing the.
So did you go shopping for the house with the most challenges?
No, you know what we fell in love with? The house, okay, here's the, you're going to love this. An older gentleman owned it, who I guess lived in there since 1940, on and off, it was his aunt and uncle's house. My, I grew up in a house where they drilled holes for, my dad had termites, they drilled holes and injected stuff in the floor in certain places. So I'm in the basement, and I'm looking down, and there's a hole's all drilled in the floor. I said, I said, you have termites? No, no termites, never had no termites. What are the holes drilled in the floor? He looked at me like I was the stupidest person to let the water out. I'll never forget that, and I was just like.
And he was right.
He was right. The gutters, I grew up cleaning, my dad, clean the gutters, clean the gutters, go clean your uncle's gutters, go clean your grandfather's gutters. The gutters had trees growing up and filled to the very absolute rim, and there was water issues, but that's, we don't see, we don't seem to have a water issue anymore, but it was just.
Comical.
I knew it needed, but it's got shade.
Yep.
And it's got waterfront.
Yep.
It's got a piece of grass.
Yep.
It's what we wanted, we kayak.
Yep.
So we kayak a lot on it.
I was just teasing you.
Yeah, so that, that's kind of, I, you can't fix the land.
Yep.
I can fix the house.
Mm-hmm.
Assuming I'm within your constraints, I can give myself headroom.
And what you're proposing is on the exact same footprint as what's there.
Same footprint, it's not changing the, this whole place. Prints, I think, of the. So like, here's what the, this is just a progress set that they just sent me today, just some idea of.
I think we do have that.
You do?
Yeah.
But they added some foundation details that I wanted to run by Ken later, to find out whether or not this was in line with what you want, before he finishes the whole set. Because he thought also a 12-inch floor would be fine, I said, no, you made it clear, you want a footing, and I, no problem with that. But send me something, and let me run it by you if you have time tonight, just to make sure that we, this is really just a picture, there's nothing much, just gives you some, it's the same thing, it's on the prints, really.
Yep, yep.
Just not the bird's eye view.
Yep, yep. All right, so what we're here to address is the, obviously, the zoning portion of it, and you and, and Bill and Commissioner can work out the details. Did you have any questions, Mike?
No, I don't have any questions. It seems pretty straightforward, and it's, obviously, it's a small lot, but what they're proposing doesn't seem like it's going to impact the neighborhood at all.
I've got off-street parking, I'm not losing any parking.
Okay.
Like I said, same footprint exists now.
Yep. John or Sean, do either you, of you have any questions on this application?
Just one question, did you go through Conservation yet?
Yeah.
Forgive me. I started with Conservation, I was at a meeting a month and a half ago. Their first words were, did you go through zoning yet?
Yeah.
And I just said, well, no, I didn't, I understood, I went to Conservation first. They said, you should really go to zoning first. I said, oh, okay. So they listened to what I, I gave them what I had, and they listened, but then they said, go to zoning, come back and see us. So I'm on the agenda for next Monday's meeting with Conservation.
Okay.
And I did see the Health Department lady, Kristen.
Yep.
Yep. Harris.
Okay, Kristen Harris, Kristen Hyen Harris. My daughter's an Hyen, not an Ian.
Okay.
So she seemed to think there weren't any issues. But, so Conservation has seen it, had some comments, mentioned some things. Steve Zisk.
Zisk, yeah.
Zisk asked about, make sure you show some dimensions that maybe, just like I'm trying to get from Ken, he advised me on, you should show this and make sure this is clear, we blew some things up. So informally, they gave me some advice to make sure the print was clear enough.
Okay, all right.
We could condition it on Conservation.
Right, exactly. Yep. Okay.
So, so you understand why, why you're getting both sides asking that? If we approved you to do what you want to do, but Conservation says, no, you can't go that close to the wetlands, you're like.
No, I can't.
Scratching your head. So that, that's the only reason why both, both committees are doing the same thing to you, so, is just to make sure that you're addressing both concerns.
John or Sean, any, any other questions on this?
I, I looked at the plans, Mr. Chairman, and it looks straightforward, of course, and it's not really changing all that, a lot inside of the basement, any walk-in, I can tell that it's just balls, but I can send some different post-party.
I was bleeding. I, there was blood. There was blood.
Okay.
They all put on their sunglasses.
All right. Sean, did you have anything?
No, I don't think you should have.
Okay, Sean?
I have no questions and no objections at this time.
Okay. All right, we don't have anybody in attendance in the audience, so we can't open it up to that. Ken, did you have anything you want to?
No, I mean, I've looked at the plans, I've talked to Mr. Brown a couple of times with regards to this, this project, and I don't see anything that would be detrimental to it, I think it would be an improvement overall with the property.
Okay. All right. Well, we don't have any other.
Chairman, I'd like to echo the same, from a planning perspective, variance is required to sort of relieve some soil shape and pottery, as we all know, and this shape of the lot causes some issues, so that the variance seems justified, in my opinion.
Okay.
From one of those three criteria. The other piece being neighborhood character, social structure impact, or anything like that, this isn't any sort of big change to the neighborhood structures, sort of impact in that regard, we're also not changing the footprint. So I don't have any issues from Community Development.
Great, appreciate it, thank you, Matt. Okay, we don't have any other comments, entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Bumbara, seconded by Mr. Holland. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Need to do a roll call.
Yep, aye, Dan Heaney.
Aye, John Bumbara.
Aye, Sean Holland.
Aye, Mike Fitzpatrick.
Okay, so the public hearing is now closed. Would the, would you like to make a motion on this?
Make a motion to approve case number 2021-18, with the condition that they, conservation approval.
Mm-hmm, yep. All right, and do we want to refer to this plan with the dimensions that are on here?
Yep. And we can refer it to the plan dated, it's drawn by Northwest Engineering Services, LLC, dated November 7th, 2021. It was received November 15th, 2021, by the town clerk. I'm just looking, so we have three pages to that, one, two, and three.
And that motion would incorporate this plan and the dimensions that are on this plan, so that's what Ken would use to enforce the order. So, all right. So we have a motion by Fitzpatrick, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, seconded by Mr. Bumbara. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, it's passed unanimously, so your variance is granted.
Can we do a roll call vote on?
Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll do that. So we'll get it drafted, we'll get it to the town clerk as soon as we possibly can, and then you're, you're, be on your way.
So when I go to Conservation, I can tell them that it's been approved, so unless they've got some concerns.
Right, and I'm, I don't think you'll get our, I know you won't get a decision before next Monday.
No, I understand, I just want to figure what can I say?
Right.
Right, no, we voted to approve it.
Okay.
According to the plans that you submitted.
And they've got the statements.
Yes, okay, great. All right, so, all right, so I guess we do a roll call, aye, Dan Heaney?
Mike Fitzpatrick, aye.
John Bumbara. So, Sean, Holland, aye.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right, so your variance is approved, and good luck.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question, sir?
Sure.
Is this caliber of what you did with the foundation plan? Which isn't much. He's just saying, okay, then put a two-foot wide footing, a 10-inch pore, and that's showing where the new combination is. He knows you want number four rebar in the footing, and coming up 14 inches.
We'll go back to the minutes, I guess.
Yeah.
And the four, he shows four, um.
Excuse me, Ken.
Sonic.
Ken? Can you guys?
Yep.
Do that out there, so we can finish our meeting.
Okay, so we.
John, what was your motion, August?
I went through August 4th, September 1st, October 6th, and November 3rd, the last four months.
All right.
Just give me a moment.
Yep, I need a moment to. All right, I am reviewing the minutes, of the ones that you mentioned, John, I, I would just like to make a change to the November minutes. In the minutes, it says that Virginia Howe and a butter was present at the meeting, but I would like it to read that Virginia Howe spoke against the application, and that, and that the chair advised her to address her concerns during site plan review with the planning board.
I remember that, yes, I'm sorry.
I just think it should be in there, and.
Truthfully, yes.
Other than that, October, November, September, and Au- well, August, I'm good with all of them, with just that one change in November.
The one change in November, yes.
Okay. Okay, with the addend- amendment.
With the amendments that.
In November? Okay, all right, so we have a motion by Mr. Bumbara to approve the minutes of August 4th, September 1st, October 6th, and November 3rd with an amendment. So, do we have a second?
I'll move to second.
Okay, so, we have a motion by Mr. Bumbara, seconded by Mr. Holland, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, the minutes are approved. Aye, Dan Heaney?
Mike Fitzpatrick, aye.
Okay.
Aye, Sean Holland.
Okay, great. We are good. Yep. We also have the minutes of June and July to approve. So.
We have April, too.
Yep, all right. Okay, so the next batch would be the minutes of April 7th, June 2nd, and July 7th. On the minutes of April 7th, there were a couple of places that the names were left blank, and just, I know the answers to those, so under number one, it would be Ed Tapley with North Brown, so Tapley is missing, it just says Ed. It also refers to, Tim was in attendance, but it was Tim Barlow, who was also affiliated with that, and then it refers to our fire chief, and it said Ken, but his last name is Vincent.
Yeah, Kent, with a T.
Kent, yep, that's correct. So it's Kent Vincent. I will get these to our Community Development Department, and then on June 6th minutes, there was a motion that was made by John Bumbara and. there was a motion that was made by John Bumbara and it says it was seconded by, and it was blank, but it was actually Ron Forgeit. And at the same meeting, there was a, on the 65 Bigelow Road application, it refers to the Abada Richard, but I would, I think we can, I don't know Richard's last name, but I think we could say the, it refers to him as the owner of property at 84 Bigelow Road. So I think if we refer to the owner of that property, that'll satisfy that. And other than that, I think the minutes look good to me.
Make a motion to approve the minutes with the amendments as you just stated.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick to approve the minutes of April 7th, June 2nd, and July 7th. As written with some minor amendments on the April 7th meeting. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Sean Holland, aye.
Aye. All right, the minutes are approved and I guess, aye, Dan Heeny?
Aye, John Bumbara.
Sean already said aye, so aye, Mike Fitzpatrick.
Okay, great. All right, so those minutes are...
All right, before we move on, on November 3rd is when we heard the, had the public hearing for Cindy, Jack and Cindy Goodson?
Yes.
On the, today's agenda, it's the, is this to sign the decision or where do we stand with that thing?
We don't have it.
Matt, you have any input on that?
We've been hounding our counselor to write those decisions weekly, multiple times a week, trying to get those back as soon as possible. He gave us a request for information a few weeks ago. We provided that the day of. We'll continue to make sure we get those quickly. I think in the future, it'll be a different procedure for doing this moving forward, but I'm hoping these might be the last two minutes, excuse me, decisions that we send out in inspection.
Okay.
I don't like to see these delays and I apologize to the office that were doing this.
Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate for, for us to ask Mr. Benoit to reach out to the town administrator, find out what's going on with town council on our decision?
Absolutely, yeah.
Could you do that, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. These are pretty simple decisions, so they, I don't see why they would be taking this much time.
All right, and Ken, was there any update for us or anything on North Brown?
Yeah, North Brown, they started putting the gravel base down for the road for their Phase 3. I was up there middle of last week. They were probably better than halfway done putting the gravel down. I did get notification from Doug from Leonard Engineering. He's been up there doing the compaction reports. They're gonna have the full set of reports come out. The intent is to get all of that gravel in place, compacted and signed off. Have not talked with North Brown with regards to binder coat. I know he's after me for building permits for the foundations that I've given him. And I'm not so inclined to give building permits until we have binder coat down. So it's back in his court. I know they're running out of time for putting asphalt in. You know, time is of the essence on their part. They have to do what they have to do. I've been getting a lot of questions from now homeowners up there with regards to the retention pond and water gardens, I think they call them, or whatever it is, the drainage between the units. There's some that are not draining out properly. The bottoms still have to be redone. I did question them with regards to that. The major retainage pond that's in back of Phase 2 left side going up, it goes from approximately unit 36 up all the way to the high 60s. They're not gonna do that so that the water is gone from there until they're done seeding, hydroseeding, because all they're gonna do is keep silting the bottom of the pond and it's not gonna work correctly. So I have sent letters out to the property owners that have contacted me with regards to that and they seem to be okay with that. Just asked me to keep following up with them. So that's what I've been doing with that.
Yep, and the hydroseeding season's past us now.
Yeah, yeah, but they, fortunately, they have the majority of the hydroseeding done up there. They're just trying to get some stabilization to it.
Okay.
I talked with them again about the fact that there's a continual carryover with the washouts on the spur road that goes out by the...
Cistern.
Cistern. And he said, "Well, it keeps washing out." I said, "Well, maybe what you might need to do is put in another drainage going down in there or something else with the wrap or put a catch basin in there or something to stop it from going down the hill and washing it out." I said, "That's your problem to take care of. It needs to be taken care of."
Well, it's been going on for quite some time.
Yeah, it's been on every report I've gotten since I took over in that project back in, I believe it was March or something like that. And, you know, I says to him, "I'm getting tired of seeing the same things on here. These things need to be taken care of." So he assured me that they were gonna take care of it. They got, all the driveways were all paved, all, for all the units that they've got finished in various stages of construction, but that Phase 2, all the driveways have been paved. And they've been doing a pretty good job with the stockpiling soils. They're not really stockpiling anything that they're not using. They do have some top soils, but that's self-germinated, so it's containing itself. They have the other piles in the middle that they've been hauling out of there. So everything seems to be still going along pretty smoothly and they're working. I, I feel they're giving their best effort to try and get things going, because I know they want their building permits on. Those three foundations that I've given out, I already told them no. I do have something I can hold on to to see if I can get them to follow through with what they're supposed to be doing.
Right, great. Appreciate it, Ken. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just one more point. With that, Matt, what I didn't acknowledge was Doc Stream as well for 116 Davis Street. We don't have that decision either.
We do not. Same as the other.
Right. Okay. If anybody has anything they want to discuss, we're hoping to do that.
I can discuss the motion to adjourn.
Oh, okay, that's fine. So I think...
Motion to adjourn, John.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, seconded by Mr. Bumbara to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Want a roll call vote?
I think so. Aye, Dan Heeny?
Aye, John Bumbara. Aye, Sean Holland.
Mike Fitzpatrick, aye.
All right, the meeting is adjourned at 7:50 PM.
Thank you, Sean.